Mr. Seigle.
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here. Stand for the legislative.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes, Peter's Council meeting held on September 9, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments limited, five minutes for non-agenda items. Seeing none. No unfinished business, new business approval for recording purposes, the Dugan consolidation plan is shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated June 18, 2024, for Thomas C. Dugan and Jessica Blackwell.
All we're doing here is putting two lots together.
You're removing that red line.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes, the Dugan consolidation plan is shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, dated June 18, 2024, for Thomas C. Dugan and Jessica Blackwell.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven nothing. Set date for public hearing regarding revisions to the Peter's Township zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development ordinance.
So we reviewed the proposed revisions with the planning commission and council at a joint workshop. We're asking that council set October 28, 2024, as a date for a public hearing regarding those revisions.
Not a regular council meeting night yet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven nothing, Mr. Lauer. Request by Keith Higgins for modification, Peter's Township Code of Ordinance, Section 385-37B, title, quote, "Streetwitz," end quote, for the proposed Trax Farm #5 subdivision.
As I read this, we're just going to do this, you're recommending that we do this, and make them put the requisite easement in later should it develop?
Yes.
Is that, have we ever done that before?
I don't know that we've ever done it before, but quite honestly, we don't, we, I can't think the last time we've seen a situation where you're subdividing across a road. There's no, there is no express intention to do anything to develop it. So, you know, what we would normally see in this kind of situation is that there's a, a plan that's associated with it. And I'm not sure that there's any harm in maintaining the 33-foot right-of-way as it exists right now. I think part of their interest is that this parcel that's to be created, they're attempting to be able to maintain clean and green, and that's the reason why they have an interest in it.
But obviously, if they come in with a development, we'll demand the 50-foot right-of-way at that point.
Yeah, in fact, my, if you, my suggestion is that if in fact, there should be a note on the plan that says that if in fact, this comes back in, or if a building permit is applied for, that the 50-foot setback can be applied then.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve a modification, in this instance, of the Peter's Township Code of Ordinance, Section 385-37B, parentheses, one, quote, parentheses, titled "Sweetwoods" for Bob Trax, Trax Farms, and Gross Family Farm LLC, and Earl and Diane Trac, to allow for a 30-foot right-of-way, with the understanding that if the land, that if a land development is proposed, or a building permit for a structure is submitted, it will be required, it will require dedication of the additional right-of-way of, what would that be, 17 feet or so?
Well, I'll get you, it would be 50, it would be a 50-foot right-of-way, so yeah.
A note to this effect to be placed on the subdivision and referenced in the deeds.
Second.
The motion is second, pending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ross, abstained. Any opposed? Six nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, authorize a time extension for Coen Market.
So Christopher Peters, on behalf of Coen Market, is requesting a time extension related to the land development submitted for a commercial site up at the intersection of East McMurray and Thompsonville Road. What they're asking for is that, that deadline, which is currently November 8, be extended to January 10, 2025. There's no reason for us not to do that. There's no harm to the township, and so it's my recommendation that, that council agree to time extension of Coen Markets until January 10, 2025.
So moved.
I have a question.
So do I.
This is a, this is a commercial.
Yes.
Piece of property, but, because, you know, we, we denied some extensions over the last year, residential plans, and, you know, I, I want to try to be consistent here.
Well, but, but the difference is, in, in the case of those residential plans, there were implications to extending the time beyond that. There also, we had, had developers that had been given time and not, not produced the information needed to be able to, to move that forward. I don't think that's what you have here. What you have is someone who's modifying the
Building?
The building to be able to, to, to address concerns the township has.
Okay. My question relates to the history of this parcel with regard to other developments. Are they all off the table now?
The only thing that's being proposed here is the convenience store and a couple additional pumps.
Relating to the more expansive development that had been
Behind it, no, this, this, what Coen's proposing is going to use the entire site, so there's, what was This will be demolished and it'll be a brand new store with bikes. And the building that you saw previously that was actually behind this building will, won't be there because they're going to use this entire site.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other comments? We did have a, a motion for a second.
But I will, so let's keep moving.
All right, very good. Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Six one, Mr. Lauer. Resolution, accepting public improvements in the Justabout Farms Plan Phase 1 and 2.
So the public improvements, including the roads and storm sewers in the Justabout Farm Plan of Lots Faces 1 and 2 are ready for acceptance by the township. Gateway Engineers has inspected the installation of these and are recommending that they be accepted by the township at this time. In anticipation of the acceptance, the developers prepared and executed a deed of dedication, paid all the taxes on the right-of-way parcels, provided as-built plans of the storm sewer system, provided closed-circuit television inspection of the storm sewer system, and completed repairs that were warranted, and have installed the fine, final wearing course. The stormwater management ponds in the plan will eventually be transferred to the homeowners' association, and that will occur as soon as the Washington County Conservation District issues a notice of termination of their MPDS permit. So it's my recommendation that council approve Resolution 090324, accepting the public improvements in the Justabout Farm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven nothing, Mr. Lauer. Award of contract for the maintenance of township's HVAC systems.
So on Tuesday, September 10, Peter's Township opened bids for a three-year contract to perform routine maintenance on the HVAC systems in all township facilities. Separate bids were requested on the municipal building and all other buildings, and the reason why we do that is the municipal building has a, a computerized control system that not everyone can maintain. The results of those, both of those bids are above, and what you see is that Combustion Services and Equipment Company is the low bidder on both contracts. They, Combustion Services currently maintains this building and has performed this work on all of our buildings at various times, and has done so successfully. And it's my recommendation that Combustion Services and Equipment Company be awarded a three-year contract to maintain the HVAC systems in all township buildings.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. This was in this year's past budget, correct?
This is in the budget, yeah.
Okay. Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven nothing.
Did that come in under what the budget is for? Last time?
The, the cost for the annual service for the, for the other eight buildings that we maintain was higher than previously. Huranic had the previous bid. All three years, they bid $4,500 for that work, so you'll see there is an increase in price for that. But we will have that in this year's budget for 2025.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item, award of contract for construction of a splash pad.
So on September 17, the township opened bids for Phase 1 of the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. This project consists of the construction of a splash pad, a support building, and a significant amount of infrastructure. The architect's estimate for the project was $6 million. The grant funding from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is designed to offset 50% of the cost, or $3 million. The grant agreements are in place, so the money is secured. The township's share of the project is financed with bond proceeds, which are in hand. The low bidder was Misera Corporation at $5,995,000. The thing that I would point out to you in consideration of awarding the bid, the splash pad shows as part of the master plan for Rolling Hills Park. You have a bid that's in line with what was projected by the architect. You have a, a construction company who's more than capable of doing this work. In fact, this is, I think, is a smaller project for, for Misera Corporation. It won't be cheaper than this ever because of the fact that you have that grant, grant funding. And, you know, the other caution that you keep hearing from me is, you know, we, we secure these grants, particularly that RCAP grant, and if in fact, we are to receive that type of funding in the future, I think the last thing the township wants to do is turn that money back right now. And if in fact, we are ever to get assistance with repairing the dam, that, that assistance most likely is going to come in the form of an RCAP grant. So I would just recommend that you be cautious in terms of, of turning that money back at this point.
Paul, did we ever get any estimates on what the annual upkeep costs would be for this operating?
You know what, I don't have those, but, but quite honestly, this splash pad, in terms of its operation, will no doubt pay for itself. What the intention is right now, and maybe Dave to talk to this, our intention is to, to make this part of the pass that people buy for the, the community recreation center, as well as charging individual fees for, for drop-in. You know, to man this only requires two individuals who are seasonal employees, and so I don't, you know, in terms of being able to recoup those costs and cover them, I, I don't see that as a problem.
With projects like this, as far as change orders, do we have something written in the contracts where they can't exceed certain amount?
Well, it, we will always have change orders on all projects. There is no way around that, but there's no way to be able to do what you're suggesting because the, what you would hope on change orders, they would, would, they would be things that are unforeseen. And the mere fact that they're unforeseen, I can't tell you what those change orders would be. I would be surprised if there are significant change orders on this because, you know, we've already graded in that site, so, and a lot of the things that we find for change orders result around unforeseeing things when we're doing excavations, so, I don't know.
Paul, could you, could you elaborate more on what exactly we're getting for this $6 million? I assume, I mean, obviously, we're getting the spray bar.
Well, you're, you're wanting, you're getting
The building?
You're getting a, a splash pad, and this is kind of a representation, there's actually a large splash pad, and then there's a small area that's, that's designed for, for toddlers or, or younger children. And then, in addition to that, there's a support building that's going to be constructed. That building has, has an area of, an office area where people get checked in at. It also has an area that is designed to accommodate parties, so we'll be able to rent the space out for children's parties. The building on the far side has five individual restrooms that are family restrooms, so that in fact, we can accommodate the people that are, that are at the park. A lot, a, a large part of the expense of this is site work. There is a, a parking lot that needs to be created to support this, that is adjacent to, to the facility. And you have, you know, dealing with storm sewers and, and things like that. One thing to keep in mind is even if we don't go ahead with this project, we probably have a few hundred thousand dollars in, in, in addressing the situation you have out there right now because we have an open permit with the Washington County Conservation District that this project will close by, by addressing the stormwater facilities. One thing that we are going to be doing that should help for the future is, and these are small things, but I think they're significant in terms of the future development of the park. We will be extending conduit and that through this area so that in fact, we can get three-phase power up to the top of the hill, if in fact, and when the township wants to build the tennis center up there. The other thing is to be able to remediate those ponds, 15,000 cubic yards of material needs to be brought from the top of the hill down, and it's going to be done in such a way that will reduce the cost of the excavation at the top of the hill to be able to do Phase 2 of Rolling Hills Park.
So, so is the parking lot part of the $6 million project?
Yes.
And, and all that conduit and everything else?
Yeah, this would be a complete facility.
Okay, so what's Phase 2 to the aquatics park?
Well, if the community wants to ever build the pool, this is designed in such a way to, to accommodate that, so the area that was designated for the community pool has been retained, and if in fact, the community ever wants to move ahead with that, that would be Phase 2.
And that's just going to be what graded in and seeded then, or what?
It's going to be a grass area for right now.
But we've been talking about doing another Phase 2, which was the basketball courts and that
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Park
Is that what you envisioned that we're going to do next?
Yes.
Do this?
Yes.
Because I, I don't want to do piecemeal and add on, I mean, I'm not going to go beyond this. I'm going to vote for this because I don't want to lose the $3 million, and this is a decent price, and I think it will pay for itself, but I, I'm not a big proponent of, you know, adding pool here, and keep going and going and going. We'll be back at 17 million, which was not where we wanted to be originally.
Now, that building there, is that going to be usable? Will we be able to rent that out all year long, or only when the splash pads are?
Well, you could rent it out, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure to what use.
The entrance would be, the entrance would be in the back, right? So it's not
Yes, the entrance is on the other side of this view.
I'm just asking, because I've had certain people complain about there not being enough public meeting spaces in Peters', and I was just wondering whether that would be another option, but I guess not.
Ah, it could be, but I don't, I can't imagine that it would be suitable for most.
So assuming that this would go through, and then, you know, the next phase potentially would be the, the pool, would this building, restrooms, everything, support having the pool as well?
You would have to have an additional building.
There would be
There are no changing rooms in here.
Okay.
There's not a pump room for the pool. There would, if you looked at the original design, there was another building that is separate from this, that swings back towards where the pool would be, so. But having said that, these facilities would accommodate the pool, a party room would still be there, those restrooms would be there, and, and still be counted towards whatever the code requirement is for, for that.
Then how, how about the parking lot? Would we need additional parking lots?
Yes. You would, you would need additional, you would have to expand the parking, the lot, we believe, but it would be graded in to be able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Sam Promutter, 144 Jonathan Drive.
One second.
Hello. So I serve on the Parks and Rec Board as well, and when this first came about, I can't remember when this was first voted on, maybe Dave might remember, but I, I would think that was the only no vote, and the reason for that was not pro splash pad, anti splash pad, it was, we had no information, right? It was the notion of having a splash pad, but at that time, no renderings, no cost, no operating expenses, and that's why I had a no vote. And I have continuously, through these meetings, always brought up, so hey, some of the issues of why things broke down in the aquatic center was the lack of information on future, right? You're, you're putting a fixture in our township that has future liabilities as well in terms of infrastructure maintenance and things that we have to deal with. It's not a static object, right? It has moving parts, we're going to have to deal with that. So I've continuously been asking these questions without getting a response, so it's not a surprise when you ask, what are the annual expenses going to be for this, right? Because those have to be considered. And when we hear things like, oh, it's going to pay for itself, I, I just, that's, that's not sufficient, in my opinion, because if it is so simple and straightforward, then those numbers would have been given to you. They should at least be forecasted, that here's our, our proposition of what we think we're going to charge, what we think it's going to be. I'm sure it's more than just two people. You have chemicals, you have, you have moving parts, you have pumps, you have electricity, you have water, you have opening and closing this. Dave, Mr. Brooks, Parks and Rec Director, knows this, I mean, one of the first things he said when he became Parks and Rec Director was how much of a money paid their aquatic center was from where he came from. I took that to heart. I don't think these are small things, whether it's a splash pad or a pool. So this isn't about pro, anti splash pad, it's, you have the power of the purse as council, and are you being provided enough information outside of like, hey, we hit the magic number of $3 million? Okay, that's good, but I don't know a single resident, a single business in the private sector that goes into like a CapEx situation of something that's really expensive, but hasn't included what we think it's going to be on the monthly, the annual, the three-year, the five-year, because that's what really makes sense, because that's a future liability for us, for something that's only open a few months out of the year, that only certain residents are going to use, that everybody's paying for. When you start layering that on other things that we're doing as a township, it all adds up. So yes, I'm thinking about this in like a microeconomics-type level. I know as you spread it across all of the residents, and it's just this one little fee, but these little tiny things are going to add up. I'm just a little discouraged that I've asked this at almost every meeting, to the point where I've been lectured at these meetings about I shouldn't be asking these types of questions in a Parks and Rec Advisory Board position, I should be asking these types of questions as a citizen in council. I disagree with that heavily. I guess my point is, I have been bringing this up numerous times, in fact, I just emailed you, Mr. Lauer, a few years, a few weeks ago, recently about, hey, do we have that yet? And you said we don't. I'm struggling with the notion that if it's so simple and it's going to pay for itself, why haven't you, I believe it's like a respect thing, too, that these numbers should be given to you as the entire package. If that hasn't been given to you, I actually don't know how you can vote for it. I don't, because maybe it's $2, and that's great, but the fact that that number hasn't even been presented to you as what we think this is going to do to our township, and what we have to consider from security, to insurance, to maintenance, to personnel, I mean, the list can go on. I'm not an expert in the space, but I would have hoped that our township would have spoken with people who have splash pads to see what are all of the potential liabilities, not liability in the legal sense, but like financial liabilities that were taken on along with this type of infrastructure. So that, that was, the one question is, does anyone feel that they've been given adequate information outside of it would just pay for itself?
Can I respond? First
Can I first, just one second? Does anyone here feel on the council who's representing the township that you've been provided proper forecasting of the low end and the high end of what this is going to cost us? I know the, the forecasts get very blurry for my business folks up here, when you get five, 10 years out, but we're all going to be here. So does anyone feel like they've been provided that level of information on this type of project?
Paul, as stated earlier, when I asked about it, it hasn't been provided.
Anyone else? Because this is more of a, I was a no vote, not being pro/anti, it was, well, I don't have information to make a vote on this, and I'm on a board, so I'm obviously not talking about financial decisions, but that was my rationale, and I brought this up every single meeting.
Can I, can I point out something now?
Is anyone, as long as
Can I point out something?
Absolutely.
First, Dave, come on up, because what Dave's going to tell you is that he, he, he does believe that aquatic centers are difficult to manage and run at a deficit, but what he was speaking to was a swimming pool. Is that correct, Dave?
I understand that.
Well, let me say this.
I didn't say splash pad, I never said splash pad.
Yeah, but you're implying that that's what the case is here, and that's not the case. The other thing
But what I don't want to do, Paul, is argue semantics, because we either have the numbers or we don't.
Same, can I, can I answer? Can I answer?
Go ahead.
The other thing that I think to keep in mind, and this is true of every recreation facility in this township and everywhere else. When we are doing the improvements on the baseball field, nobody is looking at the baseball field as to whether or not it pays for itself, or it doesn't pay for itself. And so we're investing $2 million into a baseball field with no thought that that's going to attempt to recover itself. The same's true at the football fields, it's true at every recreation facility we have. And the thing that we have done is gone out and talked to others, people who have splash pads. And what I'm suggesting to you is in fact what the, the situation is. You know, we went up to Pine Township, has a facility not quite as, as robust as this, but has a facility of similar size, and what I'm telling you is what their experience is. It takes two people to man this, it's a seasonal operation, it is, in terms of the actual cost of those people, it's what you would expect for our seasonal employees in recreation, and it in fact will pay for itself. I mean, I'd be curious what Dave has to say.
Right, I agree.
Because I mean, it pays for itself.
With my statement about operating aquatic center, we didn't have a splash pad where I came from, we had a pool. Operating that, we operated about a 70, 70% deficit. We, we understood that, we're providing that service to the township, we're providing that amenity to, to our citizens. So that's the way we take the approach with the splash pad, is we're providing another amenity at this park for, for our residents. So we are going to look at our membership fee that we have at the Community Rec Center, add a, add a fee for the splash pad, so you can come in with your, your pass and scan just like you do at the Community, Community Center, and also for non-residents, there's going to be a, a higher fee for non-residents than there would be for a, a single-day drop-in resident.
Where are we projecting the annual costs to be to maintain this?
I, I don't know that. Yeah.
So no one here is talking about whether we should or shouldn't run deficits? It's knowing if we are, and by how much, and holding us accountable to that. This isn't a, oh my God, I hope this is a profit center, hopefully we understand that that's not my position. It's if we're going to run a deficit, expectedly, well then let's know it, right? And let's try to plan for that. I mean, that's really what the question is, is that a public sector, very different than private sector, but we go into it with a forecast, and at least you're held accountable to some numbers, so that when we highly deviate from what we hoped was a really good forecast, we can say, wow, maybe we should take that into consideration when we consider our next venture. I mean, yes, it's a public sector, yes, we run deficits, and yes, we look for amenities, but it's also taxpayer dollars, right? Like, it's also my money and people's money in this room, and it's not about making a profit. You know what I mean?
Right.
So.
I, I agree with you, and, and that was my main concern with the aquatic center. I, I didn't have any information, in fact, I didn't even
I specifically brought that up.
I, I didn't think we would be able to hire lifeguards to, to run it, and, and I never got any of that information, and it just came in way over bids or got canceled, but until I would have gotten any of that information, my vote on that would have been a no, because I never had that. On this project, I don't see that, that need for, you know, the maintenance and, and all of that stuff, I don't see this incurring a huge cost of paying a lot of people. I do believe it's only going to take a couple people to manage this. I mean, you could probably turn this thing on remotely if you really wanted to. So I, I do think we've all thought about this and considered it, and just don't think, we, we don't think this project is going to have that much. Do I think we should be informed of that? Absolutely. But, you know, I, just very different thought process for me, specifically on the aquatic center versus this.
I was always opposed to the aquatic center, and there's no secret about that, but I look at this, this is even harder for me to swallow, just from the perspective of the, the segment of the residents that it's actually going to serve. There's, you don't have to see any senior citizens going to the splash pad, or probably, I would assume, of teenagers, you're looking, what, 10, 11 years old, is it going to be it?
But all of our recreation facilities are, are, when you look at them, they are age-specific, so not everybody plays football, but we have football fields. Not everybody plays soccer, but we have soccer fields. Not everybody plays tennis, but we have tennis facilities, and so I don't And so I don't think every facility in town, the expectation can be that it's gonna serve the entire population. You know, we're talking about building paddleball, building basketball courts, building a park for people with dogs. Those are all segmented. And so no recreation, community recreation facility is ever gonna be out there that services the entire community all the time. It doesn't exist.
Here's what I'm coming back to, again, those seem like more gray arguments of why is it so difficult to just have something on paper that says this is our model for running this, so that it's neutral, it's a mild deficit? Oh my gosh, we might even be cash flow positive on it. I guess I'm struggling with not the, is the splash pad gonna serve everyone? Or I hope it's a profit center, is, what is it? That's really, it's as simple as that, is what do we think it is? What do we think it's going to be? You know, I just, I think about that, obviously this extends further than just the splash pad. I think about this in general, of like, if we're gonna do something like this, it's not about, man, I hope we make a lot of money on this. It's what is it? Because again, it's the five, 10-year liability that matters just as much as the capex in the beginning of the 3 mil. We understand that is, there's a grant, it's been budgeted for, or the bonds are in hand. We all get that. It's the, you're adding, you're adding future liability of the township, which, what does that mean in a few years for us, when a pump breaks? Or there's, because the specific words tonight were significant infrastructure, right? Why? Drainage, there's pumps, there's electronics, there's mechanics. It's not a field. You know, it's not a field. It has moving parts. There's energy required to run this thing all day. It is significant, and he used the word himself, it's significant infrastructure. Not to beat up on you, Paul, I'm just saying, it's a little more of a complex system than simply a turf field. And when we get into those types of things, those require engineers and specialized technicians to fix them. Sewage is gonna get plugged up, it's gonna get drained up, there's gonna be people that have to take care of that. What are we getting into, you know?
Yeah.
That's not a yes/no vote. That's just, what are we getting into when we make these votes?
I mean, I understand what you're saying. Believe me, I'm not, I was never a big proponent of the pool, because it was way too much money, and it's too costly, and it's not only gonna be used three times, you know, three, four months out of the year at best, okay? And, but we did have figures from the local pools and what they cost to run, and for the most part, they either broke even, made a little bit of profit. And there was, there were significant expenses down the road on some of them, you know, like, I can't remember off the top of my head, because we did it a long time ago. And I just, I feel, you know, that based on what I've seen, what I know, and that this is a reasonable compromise, just because I don't feel that it's gonna cost near what, what, I know it's not gonna cost anywhere near what the pool's gonna cost, what a pool system would cost. And that was just a single pool. And that, but more importantly, you know, there are other phases here, and, you know, I would prefer to do the other phase first, and that is, you know, the pickleball courts and all that stuff. Because I think, if you look at it from the perspective that you're advocating here, which I agree with in general, that makes more sense, because A, more people could use it, and B, there's not gonna be much that you need to do every year and every year. The problem is, is that we have a $3 million grant, and if we don't take it, we're gonna lose it, and we're not gonna get another one, and we're gonna need that $3 million or whatever down the road if we're gonna do the next phase. So I understand your position, and believe me, if it was up to me, I wouldn't even do this project, but I'm looking at the projects down the road that are gonna benefit a bigger segment, cross-section of the township.
Right.
And I just think that to spend $3 million, to have this done, and not ruin our chances to get another one of these grants down the road, is worth, I don't wanna say risk, but I think it's worth doing. I'm not happy about it, but I think in the long run, it does benefit the township.
Do you have a delineation of what has to be included to use that grant? Because I know you were talking pickleball and other things. Are there very specific things that have to be water-related?
This grant is for this project. Period. Period.
And we had to finagle it to get it from what it was originally proposed at, to this.
Oh, so it's only for the splash pad?
I guess my only, my only counter, Frank, is I want to understand why we can't have both, which is, if we knew how crucial this was, right? So now we're in that traditional crisis phase, like we can't let this crisis go to waste kind of situation that we put ourselves in, is if we knew this was such an important thing, right? We can't risk losing this grant. There's swamp and puddles forming, and there's all of these issues, right? We must make this vote. Then why not come prepared? Like, why, if I've been asking for this literally since the first vote, you can attest to that. I've emailed Paul about this.
I think you made your point.
Yeah, I think, Sam. I appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
I'm gonna talk in terms of the fact, for many of you, you know, this has been a 30-year journey to overcome the vocal opposition to a pool in this community. That's how we have a rec center. It was the pool people that generated the recreational interest that got the rec center. I'm here to stand on the commitment to try and provide that amenity to this community. I've been involved with the Rose Garden Pool for probably 20 years. I know how it operated, I know how it's run, and I know it's not costing a fortune, okay? We've gone through a complete rebuild of that facility, all on a couple hundred dollar a year annual fee with our membership. So my action here at the moment is to make the motion that we accept the Masaro Corporation's bid at $5,995. What's the note?
Before you vote, so?
I have the floor at the moment.
I understand, I just don't want to go to a vote before I make a comment.
It won't.
Okay.
And I don't know that I understand the consequences of the two alternates?
Well, alternate one is a change to the base bid that would provide a more aesthetic treatment of the flooring inside of the party room. It's not worth $26,000 to do that. In fact, we've had a discussion with Masaro. I'm not sure they haven't made a mistake on their alternate, and so there may be a possibility to revisit that. Alternate two is the fencing around the facility is actually an ornamental fence, instead of just chain link, that the duck would be to make a chain link fence. I don't think you want to do that on this project. I think it should look like it belongs in Peter's Township, and therefore are recommending against that alternate.
So your recommendation is not to take either of the two alternates?
That's right.
And only the base bid?
Right.
That's my motion then.
I'll second. Motion of the second. First, Sam, I want to thank you for your comments. I think that you made very valid points, and we should be better educated on some of this information, so I appreciate that. I do have a question for Dave.
Yeah.
You know, you've been around the Parks and Rec business for a long time. Any, what's your, what are your thoughts on this? Pros, cons?
After coming from an operation for 22 years of having a swimming pool, I think this is a great alternative. I think we need to provide something in our township that provides some kind of aquatics area. I think this is a great alternative to a swimming pool at this point. So I think this is something we need to go ahead with. I think it's gonna be a great amenity to draw people into Peter's Township from the outside also. I think we're gonna have users. We see all the time that there's people from our township going to Bethel Park right now to use their splash pad, and I think that's gonna provide our residents to stay here in Peter's Township, and provide that amenity to them. And also with the party room, I think there's options to use that space. Maybe we do visit, keep it open year-round if we have to, to provide a space for parties. I know at this time at the rec center, especially in the winter months, we are very limited in space when it comes to parties, and with our classroom and our multi-purpose room at the rec center, it's a busy, busy place. So this might be another alternative to use that. And one thing that wasn't discussed with part of the facilities, we also will have a shelter area that can be rented for parties also. So there's different revenue streams that can come in here to help offset some of these costs. Thank you.
Can I just finish my comment?
Absolutely, yeah.
All I was gonna say is, my recommendation was, I don't think it will be taken, but it'd be something that you want to table, get that information, and then be able to vote on it accordingly, so you have, and I think the taxpayers of Peter's Township would like that. Whatever the forecast would be, you at least would be able to compare that over the years and see, when we're putting complex infrastructure in here, we should be considering things further out. So that would be my recommendation, table it, get the information, and then be able to vote on it properly, educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, is it possible to get that kind of information, say, from like Bethel Park or somebody local?
Well, we have talked to others with splash pads. I think, like I said, I think the most comparable is the one that's in Pine Township. I think it's the closest to what we're talking about doing.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's, those are, like, cost costs, like, you know, we have to have two people there for three months, blah, blah, blah. But what about long range? You know, like, do those pads wear out? You know, how expensive would it be to do repair?
I don't know that anybody's had a facility in place yet that's had to replace the mechanics of the facility.
I mean, I remember way back, when we first started talking about the pool, there was something, I think it was like, there was a pool up near Evan City or something, after like 15 years, they had to sink a couple, like, two and a half million dollars in it in repairs. I mean, I know this wouldn't be anywhere near that, but I mean, it would be nice to have that information. You know, unfortunately, we don't, and I don't think it's gonna be anywhere like that, and, you know, I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Tony Brown, 1-2-3 Drew. No, the only thing that bothered me was, if you vote on G, the next step would be H, right?
Yes.
So isn't it prudent to have an idea what the cost on HR?
$98,500.
For 20 seconds?
Yep.
Now we know the cost. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion.
I don't think there was a second.
Yes, there was, excuse me.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Oh.
Counsel. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-1, Mr. Lauer.
And thank you.
A word of contract for construction management services related to the splash pad.
The current contract with Kimball-Burgat is simply for design. We need to amend that contract to be able to include architectural construction management service, which would include 20 visits to the site, approval of construction submittals to ensure compliance with specifications, responses to contractor's request for information, review of any change orders, review of application payments, and close out for the project. The estimated cost for that is $98,500. My recommendation, that council approve the appropriate officials executing professional service contract with Kimball-Burgat.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Change order number two to a contract with Raffle Construction Inc. for the Peterswood Park Field 1 and 2 Improvement Project.
This, we spoke about this briefly at the workshop. One of the things that has occurred is that the original design for the baseball field envisioned 60-foot baselines, and in fact, what's required are 70-foot baselines. The contract has a unit price in it, so that the increase in size, although it resulted in increasing the cost of the project, the fact of the matter is, it's in line with what the cost would have been had it been bid that way. The change for that is an additional $29,000. And then there's also a need to move a, a catch base, a manhole that's, will be in the road. The, we've had a discussion with the baseball association, and they've written us a check for $17,500 to cover half the cost of the change in the scope of the work, and it's my recommendation that council approve change order number two with Raffle Construction in the amount of $31,474.59.
So moved. Second.
A little motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, I reviewed those part of this evening's meeting, found everything to be in order and I'll move and approve those.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. There's three letters listed under correspondence, anything you need to bring?
No, there's a letter in there from Mr. Ford expressing concern about people cutting through his property on Route 19. Chief Glover spoke to him today concerning that. I have spoke to him in the past. Quite frankly, there's nothing we can do. It isn't illegal to pull off of Route 19 and then going over these McFarry Road. But quite frankly, I don't know why anybody would do it. There's a separate lane for a right-hand turn coming up Route 19. There's nothing to be saved by cutting through his property, but...
You know, I was thinking about, if he was concerned about that, he should just block the turn in there.
He can't, oh, he can't?
He can.
Oh, no, I think he cannot, because his site plan, his approved site plan requires those connections. I think it'd be the council position, you couldn't do that.
Okay, thank you.
There's gotta be something.
Anything under reports, anyone wants to bring up? Miscellaneous zoning hearing board appeal?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this to council. As I had explained to you the last time around, Mr. Courter had applied for a variance, and it was denied. And in this particular case, quite honestly, it's in the township's interest that this variance be granted. What our ordinance requires is that the building be down closer to the road, which would put it in the floodplain. I don't know how you could possibly build the building without a variance. Mr. Courter has appealed the zoning hearing board decision to court, and I think, quite honestly, I think the township should join with Mr. Courter in seeking to have the variance granted.
I agree.
I have a question. If we did this, could him, like, or the township make that entrance off of 19 wider, because if there's gonna be more traffic?
The answer is probably, I don't know physically that that's possible, but it doesn't have anything to do with his request for this variance.
No, I'm not saying it does. I was just asking.
Okay. I don't know how that would be possible there.
Not there, not right down there, but off of 19 is what I was talking about. Just in general, I was just curious if that would happen, because, and Mark, you could correct me on like width of roads, but I think it's like eight feet short, that entrance? So four feet?
The one in front of Chipotle, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's probably a standard 24-foot wide.
It's not.
Double anyway, okay?
Yeah, it's definitely not. I just, I just was curious, because if you're having more traffic, it would be of interest. I'm a, you know, I go that way.
Yes.
So... Yeah, you know what, it's probably not 24-foot wide.
It's not.
It's probably right in, right out anyways, because you can't get, you know...
Can't make a left.
There's a median there on the...
No, but I think she's talking Old Oak.
Yeah, so...
Old Oak right itself.
Yeah. So you're taking, so if you're going...
There is an intersection on Old Oak. I think she's talking about existing...
No, Old Oak, like I'm talking, like where you come up Old Oak on 19.
Oh, you're talking about the intersection of Old Oak and Route 19.
Yeah, that is not wide enough. I know it isn't. I mean, I can just tell.
Okay. Okay, I mean, it's...
You may.
It's existed since the beginning of time, so I don't know.
Yeah, but I just, okay, so I just was more curious that if something like this were to come in, and it would bring more traffic, would we as a township, or...
The answer is, it's a township road, and what happens with that road is a decision that the township would make. So, if it was feasible to widen it, that would be a decision the council would make.
I think you're right, Paul. I know we could require the developer to do that.
And I'm not saying we can require him, but I'm just saying...
Probably consider an upside improvement.
Now, is this one actually showing a connection over to Chipotle there?
Yeah, sort of. Well, again, I don't think that has to do with, you know, we're not looking at the site plan, we're looking at the variance. But the answer to your question is that we are insistent that there be a physical connection. Now, whether that connection actually occurs or not has a lot to do with the people that own the adjacent plaza, but what we've been telling the developer is, is it has to be upgrade and opt to that, that...
So, it's not on their plan, then, the existing plaza there, that that'll be a connection?
It's not on their plan.
Same issue as with the Crossroad Shopping Center and the...
That's right.
Kmart Shopping Center.
But, there will be a time when something happens in that, that plan, that the township will be in a position.
So, the crossroad here, he's asking for a 45-foot variance, 45-foot variance back